... outside of the lake. Um, we're gonna start with the... About the flag salute, please?
Congratulations to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. In compliance with check with two thirty Republican Party Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education office, mounted in Nutley Sun, the star legend of North Africa, C. Carroll News, in Nutley Journal, mounted in Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in Nutley Sun, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. In consideration of all here present and in recognition of the importance of these proceedings, it is requested that all cell phones and pagers be turned off or silenced for the duration of the meeting. Thank you very much. Roll call, Mrs. Cooper. On the right and on the left. I know.
Mrs. Stanchek, more. Here, Mr. Klein.
Here.
Here.
Dr. E.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Here.
Mr. Scolera.
Here.
Mr. Spivak.
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Here. Approval of the minutes?
They'd mostly approve the minutes as a tribute.
Second.
Thank you.
One favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Did we get an aye?
Yes, we got a aye. Correspondence, please, Mrs. Kaczynski.
I would just like to inform the board that we have received four letters of candidacy for the board vacancy. And Mr. Kaczynski will be reaching out to the board with the next steps in the process.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Presentations.
We have Mr. Materia, this evening, our oral language coordinator, who's wanting to present on the draft oral language ESL report.
Good evening, everyone. In February of the previous school year, oral language and ESL departments presented their program review. In that program review, they outlined a five-year plan for improvements. The main recommendation, well, many recommendations, but the main recommendation was a complete revision and/or rewrite of the curricula for both oral languages and ESL. Although it was a large task, I must say that I have to thank the entire oral language and ESL department for completing both drafts on time. Every single teacher K-12 was involved in both of those departments. Each writing team was asked to focus on the vision statement and the mission statement of the district and to use those as the lens of operation when we were working together. Some of the key words that we continued to revisit throughout our meetings were measurable growth and rigor. And then we looked at the mission statement and we really said, this curriculum will create the context for our students to be not only creative, but also contribute within that global society. The last two department meetings of the year, we took on another task of saying to ourselves, okay, we have these robust documents. We need something to hold us accountable to those documents. So we decided to have a quasi-mission statement writing activity. We had time in groups as well as in whole group to come up with the following mission statement for the oral language department, and this I will read to you. The mission of the Nutley Public Schools' oral language department is to create a sustaining, challenging, and inviting context where students can learn experientially while acquiring a profound understanding of new languages and cultures, different perspectives, and continuous learning, which are the key elements of a successful contributor in global society. When people ask us why, if we can't refer to this and say, this is why we're doing it, then maybe we should revisit something in our curriculum and maybe not do it. So this will hold us to our curriculum. If it's in our curriculum, it's because it helps us do that. With regard to ESL, once again, the same process. And our mission will be slightly differently, but some of the salient ideas are still there. The mission of the Nutley Public Schools' ESL department is to create a sustained conducive environment where English language learners, which are ESL students, can gradually assimilate to American culture while acquiring the structure of English, ultimately allowing them to successfully contribute in all academic and social-cultural arenas. What drove the process of reviewing the current documents that were in place prior to the revision and the actual creation of the new documents were these four main goals. The first major goal was to create something that was current and relevant, that our kids could connect to, our teachers could connect to, that's aligned to the state standards, and most of all, that's rigorous, that creates an unsettling environment for students to really try and learn and grow. We want to make sure in that second goal that our students from grade level to grade level are building upon vocabulary. We're talking about vocabulary in the oral language classroom and in every other content area, academic vocabulary. We need to teach a word and then in that next year, build upon it, not teach it and forget about it. We also want to create a document that will help teachers create assessments. That's how we measure important learning. It's hard to create an assessment that measures important learning without a document, which is a curriculum. So now we have this document that will help us create these tools that will tell us if we're doing a good job or if we're not doing a good job and how to improve it. And finally, specific to ESL, many of us have heard about the best way to increase your SAT scores or improve your vocabulary by reading. That's true, but the best way to actually increase the retention of that academic vocabulary is via the task of writing. And that's something that we're going to really be using in our ESL classroom for ESL students to perform successfully on assessments. Key changes in oral languages, the major key changes are the six major themes. From fifth grade to 12th grade in oral languages, every unit is going to have the same theme, all the way from AP to the little fifth graders' learning. Themes are the same, the sub-contexts are different. So once again, they'll learn about technology. Maybe the technology or science in fifth grade will be about food. You know, and have food and a healthy diet, all the way through AP where they'll read informational texts on transient obesity. So they'll be able to build on that vocabulary. There's also an increased focus on oral and written assessments, which you'll see in the capstones, and an increased rigor, as we presented earlier in the year. A full Level One course will be presented at the middle school next year, and then the 14th, 15th school year, there'll be a full Level Two course. ESL also has that thematic approach, and we've created grade clusters, which will allow us to spiral up and spiral down based on students' value level and proficiency. When you look at a oral language unit, it has most of the same segments of the language arts and math curricula. Some of the focus segments that don't appear in oral language and math and language arts that are in oral language because we kind of sort of need them are the language features being covered. We don't want to teach grammar and grammar alone, but within the context of personal and public identities, we want to make sure that we're treating various, whether they're moves or verb tenses, we want to make sure the teachers are aware of that. We also broke down our earned understandings and essential questions to overarching, which are the ones that will carry through either the whole level or throughout the entire program, and then we'll top those essential questions and earned understandings, which can be treated within that unit. Each unit will have either a capstone or a common assessment. Basically, capstone and common assessment are interchangeable to measure the important learning that exists in that unit. The six themes, once again, as I skated earlier, are going to be present in all grade levels. Personal, public identities, families and communities, contemporary life, global challenges, science and technology, beauty and aesthetics. Those are the prescribed six themes also on the AP assessment for French, Italian, and Spanish. For Latin, we have a different thematic approach, and on ed yourself, small scope and sequence plan, that have been revised. A sample unit in oral languages. This is kind of an idea of what we would be doing in a contemporary life unit at Level Three. You'll notice that the first few essential questions are, what do I do to help me understand the details of what I'm reading here? That's something we want our students to carry throughout the unit, throughout the level or even throughout the program. And we get more specific down to what are the challenges of contemporary life, how is contemporary life influenced by cultural products, practices, and perspectives? The unit capstone project for a Level Three class for this unit would be a full interview process. As soon as we'll create a resume, cover letter, create the own interview questions, they'll be put in an actual pool, and then they would conduct monitored mock interviews. So there will be a written assessment and a moral assessment to measure the important learning in that unit. Overview of ESL, well, it will be similar to oral languages. Just pay attention, briefly to the fourth bullet down. It's actually not a bullet, it's a dash, I apologize. The language focus, there are three different lenses that our teachers are going to use. There's a linguistic complexity, which is basically putting into focus the level of proficiency of the student. Certain students will have a higher level of proficiency within the same class. Pay attention to that. The language features, those would be the grammar, the grammatical ideas that need to be unpacked, and then the language conventions and vocabulary. We're using the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts to drive our ESL curriculum. Once our students transition out of ESL, they have to perform successfully in a regular English Language Arts class. So we might as well introduce them in a more supportive environment in ESL before they actually go into the regular Language Arts class. The units, I won't read them to you, but we talked about clusters. Kindergarten and first grade will share the same units, same unit titles. What happens is we move from oral proficiency at the lower levels, and we keep adding more and more of a weight to the written proficiency as we go from K through six. We also add one full science unit, which is married to a certain extent to the new science program that we're adopting, while also be infusing science throughout those units at the elementary level. At the middle school level, we have two sets of grade clusters, seven and eight. We have two different classes that are offered, enter and emerging, for our poor nature students, older students that are demonstrating relative proficiency to our expanding students that are beginning to transition out. As you'll notice, some of the key phrases, expository writing, narrative writing, the ability to persuade, literature and fiction. Every time the students are learning something with regard to content, there's a reading component, and they will demonstrate proficiency via writing. And that's how they'll demonstrate their understandable vocabulary in those units. Nine through twelve, you'll notice once again, if everything is clustered, beginner ESL, intermediate ESL, advanced ESL. You'll notice a lot of the same topics. So the students, even if they don't demonstrate full proficiency at the beginner level, they will still have the opportunity during the intermediate level to continue growing in that skill. Prior to exiting the program, we will make sure that they have absolute, not absolute proficiency, but full proficiency in that skill. Sample unit at ESL, we're going to take the ESL advanced class. It's a newspaper, a newspaper reading collection. A lot of times, we take for granted what the newspaper offers to us. Newspaper is a cultural artifact. And our ESL students can demonstrate difficulty in reading that. So we're going to give them the ability, often in a social-cultural context in an authentic manner, which is using the newspaper as an informational text for learning. This is how we're going to measure our learning, everybody mentioned it briefly. In oral languages, we'll have capstone projects at the lower levels, essay series and debate series from Levels Three through AP to measure that oral and written proficiency in almost every unit. And then in ESL, we'll have a reader model assessment with match-to-matches, the access assessment, which is the state assessment. We have journal writing, K through six, and we'll also have an essay series based on level of proficiency in each unit in ESL. Moving forward, this year, we're going to implement the draft. We're going to revise and modify, and we're going to pilot new resources to see what accommodates us. Fourteen, fifteen, we're going to implement the revised curriculum, implement, and select new resources, and then continue the provisions. And then the fifteen, sixteen school year will actually map the curriculum to further guide the instruction that you'd like to see in our classrooms. Thank you very much.
Mr. Materia, first, I want to... I'll come over this way. I want to thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sure. ESL, no problem. First, I want to thank you because prior to coming to the board, we kind of rolled back things, and we really needed to step forward. I think you did a great job there. Can you just explain what's, most of the things talk about Level Three, what is Level Three like? Is that a grade or a specific class? Where's Level Three?
Prior this year, at this past school year, we had Spanish Three, Italian Three, Latin Three. Our curriculum, except for Latin, Latin has its own separate curriculum because it's not, Latin is a language that's not necessarily spoken anymore. It's more of an analysis approach, which is still very important for our program. Level Three would be all students that are in their third year of language that counts towards high school graduation. So for example, Level Three is only offered currently at the high school. So we have, there are going to be mostly sophomores and juniors in a Level Three class. That's for a Level Three class base.
So it looks like we're doing mostly new assessment after Level Three. So what are we doing for Level One, Two?
No, no, we do have assessments. That was just a sample unit.
Okay.
That I had put up on the slide. So I wanted everyone to kind of see how the essential questions connect to the actual topics and subtopics, and then what the capstone, how the capstone measures what was learned. But there are assessments in oral languages and ESL for each grade level where we provide instructions.
I apologize.
No, 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 it's fine.
I was just trying, thank you. Which, oh, hold on, what, sir? The, uh... The program that you're starting now, I see you're talking about 2013, 14. When will the oral languages be trickling down to K to six? When will that be started?
That's a great question. It's an excellent question. Once again, as I mentioned, we're beginning to get a presentation in February. We presented our program, we had a five-year plan outline. As we implemented this document, which will really be the driving force of our programs, we'll actually be able to revisit that five-year plan and see if we have to modify. In the original five-year plan, which was presented in February, the goal was to begin trickling down oral languages in the 14th, 15th school year and then in the 15th, 16th school year, which would then bring us to our next program review, which we would then actually be able to offer oral languages all the way down to kindergarten level. So it's going to be a multi-year implementation. But with board support, I think we'll be able to reach it.
Thank you.
Scott, I really have a question. I don't think this is the right time for it. We will entertain a question from the audience when the resolution is brought up for the presentation, correct? Is that okay?
I just wanted to ask what newspapers, like, I can wait.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Materia.
Tony, please, four, two.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. Thank you, Mr. Materia. If you don't mind hanging out, we made a question very shortly. Thanks to the board, I cannot believe it's the end of August already. Here we are, ready to start this school year. Just as a recap, we had our administrative retreat. All district administrators were with me upstairs in the meeting center. From the sixth to the eighth, we had training, beginning with our mission statement as always, going all the way through all the pieces. We had security, we talked finance, we talked all manner to make sure everyone's on the same page. The crux of most of what we did had to do with professional accountability. Both the administrative evaluations and most specifically, teacher evaluations. On Wednesday, we brought in 25 teachers from across the district, every building, and ran six hours of training for everyone. Feedback from the teachers and administrators is incredibly positive, and we're reworking that tomorrow. Starts our new teacher orientation, with the administrators have also been involved, invited back into the tent for different pieces as we go through the evaluation piece again. Our goal is that every time we go through it, new things come up, and everyone feels like they're more prepared, better prepared to properly implement both our process but also the requirements of state, which again, for the most part, we've been in agreement with. The difficult challenge, the challenge that we're going to face with most districts is the time that it takes to run the process effectively, the number of evaluations that have to be done, given our administrator-to-teacher ratio is what's going to be pretty difficult. The same reason that we keep class sizes down so teachers can give individual students individual time and feedback, same issue when we have administrators working with individual teachers. The more of those means that you have to have, the less time they can take to prepare for them, the less time they can spend in them. So that's going to be our challenge when we're working on that. Letters going out actually tonight, all, the parents of all our students incoming and existing, from me, welcoming everyone back, talking about the work that's gone on this summer. It's a brief letter, but it was difficult to track everything we've been doing just over the last two months, informing people about the academic work, the facilities work and the rest, but also letting people know that parent portal will be open this evening, and class list will be available there, so one room and the rest. They'll be available through parent portal so they can check in. As a legal update, I know that there will be updates a little bit later, but the board did get together, have committee made on the recommendation for general counsel. Mr. Marcus, I'm standing by, we've been working with special counsel. We'll be calling on the general counsel full-time. I did want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Camaco. I've had two years here, he's worked closely with me. And I know the district is going in a different direction, but I just want to thank him for his service while I've been here. As far as the academics, there's a good deal, and I do think it's important, the most important thing we do when it comes to working with students. And so, curriculum-wise, language arts and math, they're appearing on tonight's agenda. This would be the final step in improving those pieces of curriculum. One step's done, one further step, which we discussed before, we have to send the resolution to Camaco so that we can receive the Q-SAC letter we discussed at previous point. They've been waiting on us to make sure we get that final resolution approved. So please approve that resolution. In my quarters, in a letter going out, guided reading libraries, we've been talking about, they've arrived, they're in each building. The guided reading libraries are there to support individual instruction across classrooms. At the elementary building, we've got almost 1,600 texts that are going to every building and about 450 books here at the middle school to support instruction across the curriculum and reading instruction at specific levels. Our classroom libraries, which were specifically designed for us to match our social studies, our science, our curricula that are in district, they were shipped last week and are scheduled to arrive any day. Each classroom, K-six and seven and eight, those seven, eight language arts classrooms, will have a classroom library with 200 titles. So again, to make a privileged environment so that students and our teachers have access to literatures that they can be constantly reading, not just books they're interested in, but books that are at the appropriate level to push them as they develop in their comprehension and literacy skills. Our assessment kits were purchased for all teachers, Grade Two. Materials were purchased also for our grades three, three, although we are proposing that the K-two should be impacted. Three, three is being built for us based on our needs. Ms. Valani and Ms. Klein, Shelley Klein, our consultant, are continuing working to train the teachers, assemble the kits, and make sure that September, we're ready for Tier One and Tier Two. We're there, we're prepared and ready to go with Tier One and Tiers Two. We've got a great deal of positive feedback, and teachers will not be in the Tiers yet, which is good, it looks like we'll hope eventually we can hold start, turnkey these things internally, and we expect a continual relationship in this client, but response from teachers has been overwhelmingly positive. Talk about professional development. Parent information night, we did try and schedule it in August, but based on feedback, thank you to our PTO leaders, the parents taking vacations, some people not around. We pushed it up until September, but we will be having a series, first of which, it would include what the new philosophy is, how to support the philosophy at home when it comes to reading with your CO children, and exactly what's going on in classrooms so that a better understanding and parents can have a more informed conversation with our teachers and our principals. In math, all K-12 mathematical materials have arrived. Took up the entire small gym. They have since been organized and disseminated, and our teachers will be prepared against professional development that's already occurred and will continue to occur through the year. So we keep the teachers comfortable and aware of all the different facets. We've also, most of it, if you will, of the new materials that have come in. In science, again, we talked about, thanks again to Roche, but we've added out, thank you to the board and the diligence. But all K-five science materials will have arrived in district. They've been sorted and delivered. Professional development will occur at the beginning of the year. Science will not be taught at the elementary level until this teacher has received the appropriate professional development, and then we'll move from there. So exciting times in multiple content areas, and all of this coming out of our programming and process, which is supported and which continues. Actually, Mr. Materia is part of that action team strategic plan. We're bringing in physical education and science as we all roll out those new materials. So again, every year, another two content, and so we're excited about that. In technology, I want to begin to start the list, as you saw in the brief one on the arm, but just briefly, most importantly, we've been able to leverage resources, and there will be more technology available for instruction in every single building at the 712 level by department, and two new iPad cards and a new fully-functioning laptop card that can be customized for everything being imaged and in the right places and ready to go in all the elementary buildings. So we're excited about that professional development, and Mr. Materia being continued for all the teachers. The good news is, right now, there's more demand than we have supply. And that's what we want to keep generating, that keep teaching the teachers how to make a 20% classroom and keep them excited about infusing technologies that they're fighting over, and we have to keep getting there. Staffing, I'm excited, we have an addendum, which I'm happy to announce, but we'll be appointing a new middle school vice principal. I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Solomon through the interview process and recommending him. He actually comes from a district where his hiring principal and I worked together a long time ago, won't say how long, but I would, she could not say enough, and the positive things about him. So it's a high bar set for you, we're excited to have him. The other pieces, you noticed a number of pieces, our bookkeeper and a number of the final teaching positions. There are still two teaching positions that we have to fill. We actually had both of those filled, but we have lost those two teachers to other districts. And so we reopened the positions, and we're out again. The coordinators are making plans to make sure that we're covered for next week. Our state federal reporting up to now, our CDS, school report card submissions, our graduate report, and our NCLB and Perkins, all except for Perkins have already been submitted. Perkins is in the final stages of preparation, and we still have time to make that submission. So we're on schedule to make sure we're meeting all our deadlines. Just a reminder to the board, based on the feedback that I got, and I had to brief again, our board goals are now set. Based on the text that was sent out, we'll make a presentation on that later date from the work off of our retreat. We'll be moving forward with those board goals. At Ms. Valani's next academic meeting, we will discuss the full text of Superintendent's goals. So the year, we get all those approved, the other September. I did want to highlight, we're having our first-ever coaches academy. We keep talking about professional growth, professional practice, and how we don't want to leave any stone unturned, any resource unused when it comes to leveraging everything we have for student success and student growth. The athletic department is an extension of the educational experience. I know we're working with the administration committee, Mr. Pyer's making regular reports. We have a new framework, so athletic coaches will be following the same process for growth that all of our professionals follow. It's based off of national standards. Starting tomorrow night, for three nights in a row, we're having every single coach for all three seasons in. Court training involves mandated professional development, conversations about our philosophy and our evaluation system, as well as motivational speakers, coaches, clinics, and expectations from the administration. So that's exciting. We'll be having the second one during the school year, and this should become a regular piece so that we're making sure that our coaches are getting the same kind of support that the rest of our professionals are. I have an election update, I spoke to the administration committee today, but Ms. Linda Von Essi, she's clerk of the board of elections, in responding to our request, and again, that from Mr. Scolera, Miss Stanchek, mine, and members of committee who've been pushing that. We all were paperwork received, unfortunately, they're saying, due to the timing of this paperwork and the fact that there's a national election this year, they're going to be unable to move any of our polling locations for 2013. But they will, based on our preparations, review our recommendations and act accordingly to try and move for the 2014 election cycle. She sent an opinion and some following documentation to my office, which we reviewed. We'll continue to be in correspondence with them to make sure that moving into next year, we don't lose the opportunity. And based on that, that means, we did change the calendar, so we're having both professional development for Election Day in November, so schools won't open for students, but for the special election, we will have school, and Ms. Valani's already started preparation again for the ad security, working with not the police department and making sure that we have extra security staff working with the elementary principals so that our buildings are safe and secure during the special election. As far as the facilities themselves, Mr. Nicolet and I have been around to every building at this point. The gym floors were just redone this morning, which is pretty much the last touch as they finalize certain classrooms in every building, but teachers have been in the building since last Monday. We're together, taking care of all the new materials that we have in. So it's an exciting time, and we're looking forward to being ready to open. We are right on schedule, and I want a big thank you to our custodial staff, our maintenance crew, our technology crew, including our summer help and our building grounds. Mr. Nicolet, please. Sometimes overlooked, but we want to make sure we have the types of facilities that our students... the types of facilities that our students deserve and I feel that we do and we're doing[601.37]
With the English language, we may use a local newspaper which is a lot easier to read. And students that are more emerging may use the Bergen Record or the Star Ledger.
And are you going to go after particular articles like Current Events or World or Domestic? Or have you thought about that at all?
Well, actually, for example, we have one activity, I'll give you an example, for intermediate ESL. And those are our students that have intermediate proficiency, of course. We start off with wedding announcements in the Star Ledger. It's a great way to use informational text, very simple to use. The goal is to use wedding announcements, have them read, digest, process, and then describe to their classmates and their teacher what the wedding announcements are about. And that's how they demonstrate proficiency and what they would do.
Okay, and then what about science? I mean, and again, this can go back to your newspapers. Can you be objective, you know?
Just, just give me a second, okay? And just address it to me, just for protocol, I know. It's just gonna, it just makes life easier for us.
You know, with newspapers, the way we are, I mean, you mentioned two of my least favorite, The New York Times and the Star Ledger. But I'm a little relieved to hear that you're going to at least start with wedding announcements. That's, you're not going to go right to the editorials. But as far as, you know, science goes, you know, are you going to teach evolution mainly? Or a little creationism, or a little bit of both, or?
Now, we're talking in the language, George, and ESL.
Right. We did, we did the newspaper part. Now, I had, my other question was about science.
Okay.
And then that'll be it.
With regard to evolutionism and creationism, that sounds something that we're going to be addressing in the curriculum. If it does appear in a newspaper article, that would be something that I would ask the ESL teachers first to discuss with the science department, see how the science department is addressing those issues. We want to make sure that we're on the same page when it comes to information of that how. All right, great.
Very cool.
Terry Corr, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for the Nutley Parenting Academy Network. I have a question about, it's in the personal agenda report, the last page, page 16. Under Tricia Schippenhaus, it says that she's going to be receiving a $3,000 prorated stipend for supervising these school nurses. My question is, I don't remember Mrs. Marano receiving that, so I was just wondering why she is receiving that, and plus the fact that things have changed since we have Mrs. Joel Marino also helping to supervise. So.
This stipend has been used in the past from that position as supervising nurses. We were hoping that that would be a point of half. We've been working with the association, position with lead nurse, which we came to a quick agreement on, we posted. Of course, they have no candidates. Lead nurse that is responsible has to fall back to Dr. Schippenhaus, which applies to the stipend.
All right. In my district, I mean, we're a smaller district, but in my district, what we do is we have the principal acts as the supervisor for the nurse and the nurses actually meet on their own when they have to. But I just feel that $3,000 is a lot, an additional supervisor. Thank you.
Jennifer Higgins, 132 Lakeside Drive. I had a question on item number three, the approval of the language arts curriculum. It's on the draft agenda, there was going to be a presentation tonight, and I was just wondering why that didn't happen?
They actually made the presentation at the curriculum at the last meeting.
At the last meeting? So that was just a mistake on the draft agenda for tonight?
It may have been carried out. They actually, language arts math, Mr. Boneson, this morning, they had the last meeting, you make the full presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
And with us, which we heard this time on resolution. We're going to break from our normal routine now to take nominations for election of Vice President on Board of Education.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Jim Cookte to take the vacancy of Vicky Flynn for Vice President.
You'd like to nominate him as Vice President on Board of Education.
You're right.
I'll say it. Just square a second. And the others? Just call for a vote, please.
Vote, Paul.
Vote, Paul.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookte?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Congratulations, Dr. Cookte.
I'd just like to thank the fellow board members for electing me as Vice President. It was an honor, and I thank you.
Okay, now we're going to raise the questions. Mr. Dancheck, will you take academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to put forward academic resolutions, one through eight is written.
Okay.
Vote, Paul, please.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookte?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Spizardo, will you take administration resolution, please?
I'd like to put forth, administration resolution number one is written.
Any second. Second. Any questions? Vote, Paul.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookte?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Finance, Mr. Cookte, please.
Yes, Mr. President. I move finance resolutions, one through 16, is written.
Second.
Any questions? Vote, Paul, please.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookte?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Scolera, will you take personal resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move personal resolution one with the following amendments. Page two, Joan Fowth is removed from the agenda for this evening. And Alisa Muziaw also be removed from the agenda this evening. I have a resolution.
Second.
Any questions?
What category?
Personal agenda.
No, typically. That should be too typical.
Oh. Page two.
Yeah, under certificated?
Yes. Page two under. Everybody's okay? Any other questions? Vote, Paul, please.
Mrs. Dancheck Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookte?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Still on the personal, correct?
Are these two ones I'm going to move up? Are these two ones that I can move on the personal agenda, just give them now?
Yes.
Should I read one? Sorry about that. Um, should I read it? Should I read it? So, I'd like to move an addendum on the personal agenda that Michael Solomon will be appointed as a 10-month Vice Principal for the middle school, replacing Mrs. Higgin, who is now the principal. And the start date is pending release from the current district. I move the resolution.
Second.
Questions, ma'am?
I'm just saying that the board should maybe get some information prior to that decision at least in the resume to look at before that was put on our agenda. That's all.
You're right. You're right. The administration committee could read before this board meeting. There should be more information. Any other questions? Vote, Paul, please.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookte?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
State.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Reed? I believe it was on the head. No.
No.
Not the resolution, the resolution.
That's why.
Should I move? Okay, we have two other addendums. Mr. Cookte, is there any other financials to the addendums?
Yes, Mr. President. I move finance, addendum resolution number 17 changes in signature with depository funds and number 18 change of signature depository funds to the bank, adding James Cookte as the Vice President.
Second.
Questions? Vote, Paul, please.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookte?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizardo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Mr. Solomon. If you'd like to maybe stand up and say hello to our board and citizens. You, we're looking forward to you working with our district, and I think you'll enjoy the experience.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you, kind of, thank you.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes. And we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. Any questions?
Jennifer Higgins, 132 Lakeside Drive. With regard to the withdrawal of the job offers to the two new occupational therapists, if I caught the last names correctly, after being really excited all day that you were doing this, I was wondering what happened and why change of heart at the district?
Not a change of heart, but there was a procedural question that came up right before board meeting. It was information brought to our attention that we want to make sure we were clear on before we move forward.
Okay. So does that mean that you won't continue to pursue hiring two additional occupational therapists for the district? Or are you pursuing it servicing the children in a different way?
Now, if you listen to what Mr. Scoler said, we just hold them off of the agenda for tonight for further discussion.
Okay.
We're not changing our philosophy at all. We just need to discuss it with the fire board and with our legal attorney.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, nothing more questions, is that okay? Okay, I have seven things to pass.
Hi, my name is Judy Rosseto. I'm actually not from Nutley. I'm from Wayne, Jersey. I do remember you well. And I'm here to speak on behalf of a group of discerned New Jersey parents, grandparents, and citizens. I am here to speak to you about a dreadful agenda that is attacking our public schools. It goes by the name Common Core. It was supposed to be a vehicle used to keep all the students on the same page throughout the country in order to prepare them for college. It may have started this way, but has slowly evolved into a pretty issue of computer programs, propaganda, data mining, and MRI testing to control our children from kindergarten through 12th grade and beyond. If fully implemented by the states, learning will never be the same. The race to the top federal program in 2010 heavily favored state applications which agreed to adopt Common Core state standards in return for federal grants. Incredibly, no testing has been done to prepare Common Core against other education standards. There was no cost analysis. There was no process to inform state legislators or local school boards. The standards were not even finalized at the time. They were still in a draft form. So governors of stat, cash-starved states agreed to something they had never seen in order to be considered for grants. In so doing, each governor usurped local school boards and parental authority. Because Common Core is the same across each state and school district, the education standards cannot be changed by actions of local school boards and cannot adapt to parental input. Everyone is the same in all states and all school districts, whether we like it or not. Unfortunately, in New Jersey, Common Core implementation costs exceed the grant money. New Jersey was awarded a one-time federal grant of $38 million in 2012. This does not even cover the first-year implementation costs, which include all-new technology, massive data gathering, and multiple standardized assessment testing each year. One school district in New Jersey spent $300,000 on computers for each student entering this school. Computers may be, must be refreshed every few years, so this would become a repeating expense for taxpayers. Multiply that by the several hundred school districts in New Jersey, and you will see how computer costs in the first year alone far exceed the grant money. Common Core requires unprecedented personal data gathering, including education, health, family and lifestyle information collected per student at school, which is then sent to a national database. It is not clear who will have access to this highly confidential information, how it will be protected, or for what purposes it may be used. This is non-political argument. This is an attack on the free system of education. This federal top-down control over education isn't a new thing that is happening with just this administration. This has been happening for decades in America. I don't really care who started it. I just want to know who is willing to be a part of stopping it. I feel that as citizens, we not only have the right to be involved in our government, we have the responsibility. When we see things happening in government that are not in step with what we believe are best for our families, our communities, and ourselves, then I believe the people have a responsibility to hold that government accountable. We need to be very vigilant and realize that this isn't just the next fad in education. Nationalizing education creates a centralization of power. This will lessen, if not completely remove, teacher and parental input. Remember, the federal government does not give away money without strings attached. I ask you to do your homework. Check this out. You can look at the website, stopcommencore.com, and the truthineducation.org. Contact your state senator. Ask him to co-sponsor Senator Jeff Van Drew's bill, S2973. Ask your assemblymen to sponsor a bill in the assembly to opt New Jersey out of Common Core. This must be stopped now. I understand that you really are mandated, and there's not too much you can do except to raise your voices and call whoever you need to call in the state board of ed and among your colleagues, and ask them to stop it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
53 Lakeside Drive, representative of Nutley CPAC. Just have a couple of quick questions. Just to bring to your attention, the middle school website, there are links for letters to open that are not allowing you to open those letters, just so you're aware.
The middle school website?
Yeah, it's only, as far as I know, in the middle school. Professional development, you guys just mentioned that you were going to provide that for the coaches. So I'm just kind of curious, and I'm sure you know where I'm going with this, if, you know, at some point, any kind of training or development for children who have special needs who attend these public schools are going to be woven into that formula?
You mean the teachers, the students?
And the coaches.
Absolutely. One of the things that Dr. Schippenhaus and Mrs. Joel Marino have been contemplating, I mean, we've put together an entire calendar, it's not just training for specific groups of teachers, but how we do training for all, how to support all students for all of our teachers and staff members.
Would we be able to access that document to see?
Once we have the calendar, sure.
Okay, great. And then the last thing I just want to mention, do we have any kind of report regarding the state of our special ed department?
Brief report, not as of yet.
A presentation or anything?
No, one of the reasons is we're still putting together staffing up until this weekend. Numbers have changed, we're still working through IP's. But as we said, we may have regular reports to the academic, the admin committee, and eventually we'll have Dr. Schippenhaus and some actual staff members back.
Do we have a date when that's going to happen? Because I think that it's going to take a while for...
Well, actually, what they've actually been pushing is to form the CPAC officially, as you know, the data website. Once that's done, one of the things we're going to have, make sure we have is a liaison from the board on that committee that should have regular meetings, so we can have a constant update on our special education department.
And will that be held up in these board meetings as well?
Well, the CPAC meetings will happen in CPAC meetings, but then the board meetings, and we'll come back to the very subsequent board meeting, and then make official...
You mean the PAG meetings?
Sorry?
All these new acronyms. I think you mean the PAG meetings.
That's what she's talking about, because of, so the same, the parent advisory.
The point is, is that we've been, it was our understanding that when she was hired as an interim superintendent back in March, that her focus or her purpose was to provide us with the status of our special ed department. It is now August coming up on the upcoming school year, and we still don't have any picture.
Well, her initial picture didn't come in the form of a report, it came in the form of staff needs, procedural needs, professional development needs.
Why can't we have that information?
We've been presenting that regularly.
To who?
If you look at our, when she came and discussed exactly how we're changing our staff in months, if you look at our professional development piece, what we talked about, it's been coming in pieces, not as one solid fourth that we were talking about, but part of the point is, was when we hired her, it was really to do both things, which is run the department and run ours. And when asked to choose which over which, it was running the department. She can do it now, it is, Joel Marino is here. She's been here, they've been literally working nonstop this summer, trying to catch up and get a set for September. Once they start to find it...
To gel?
Yeah, they're in gel. I think they've actually already gelled, and of course, to ensure enough time.
Right.
But as we start to get back, and we have them back, and we start moving, and we really have a backing on the set, then we can turn back toward finalizing that, and then get to the board, which I need to...
Do you think we'll have something by the end of the year?
The academic year?
Yeah, not the academic year, December.
Either, yes, we'll go on these four.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Terry Corr, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for the Nutley Parenting Academy Network. I do have a question. On the website, it came to my attention from someone who's checking out the website, there was a letter from Dr. Schippenhaus about her, the new CPAC or PAG, whatever it is. And the parent was upset because it was not given, she didn't receive it via email. I was just wondering why that wasn't sent out through email distribution. It was just put up on the website. The only reason why I say is because parents really don't know enough to just check out the website all the time. I mean, I was just talking to, before walking in here, a mother who works until 6:30, and she's like, Terry, nobody told me that this new information was up. So, in the future, if there's anything coming from Dr. Schippenhaus, could we please, and especially our out-of-district parents, too, if she can just email us the same way that you send out emergency notification systems?
Well, and again, I tried to post it, we're trying to get the communication out there, getting people to sign up for, and even, there's nothing specific to special yet, although we should make, the way we deal with athletics and the performing arts. But the idea was, I have some comments from even parents in the room, that we realized it was on the website, and it is clear, but it would have been nice if it had been directly sent to us. So as we kind of get these pieces together, it's a communication chain we have had initially prior, but we want to make sure we have them in place. So it's like, well...
I just have another question. I mean, we don't, we do have children who do have special needs and do attend school, but sometimes, once in a while, we may have that child who has a medical condition that they're not able to attend school. I'm just thinking in terms of them, what do we have in terms of technology, like Skyping or homework online, to kind of keep them up to par with their non-disabled population? Just my...
Mrs. Dancheck Martin, this is a big advocate for making sure we have, we're leveraging real-time main technology, we have to make that connection, home-school connection as strong as possible. We actually use a number of technological tools, relatively recently, the last two years, we've kind of brought this on. We don't use Skype, we don't Skype students in yet, things like that. But we do have a robust home instruction program, the students can attend school, it's a procedure that we follow, to make sure that those students have a direct liaison, a direct connection to the teachers, and you can keep up with that.
Okay, so for, just to get this straight, for a child who is classified special ed, she or he would get 10 hours a week of home instruction, and a child who is a 504 would get five hours a week, or is it both 10?
It depends on the individual student.
Okay, because under the special ed code, it's supposed to be 10. So I was just wondering, I mean, some districts like Montclair, just home instruction, whether it's a 504 special ed, it doesn't matter, everybody gets 10?
One of the things that we've done is we work in the instruction program, we have a different administrator in charge of 504 now, one in charge of IRS, and as far as special ed and the rest, and the connection with home instruction, I can tell you, I think more than any term in the past, we're making sure we don't let go.
Okay.
So there's a specific number we have to get, that's why I'm much more concerned with knowing, you could hit the code and not be giving the student everything that they need. We want to make sure our professionals are working with individual students to make sure that if they need more, we're providing more, you want to make sure that just because there's a specific condition, that was bound to lie.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry, I just have one more question. Jennifer Higgins, 132 Lakeside Drive, about the letter from Dr. Schippenhaus, in addition to what I already emailed you. The way the letter is worded, it asks for the special education classroom. And that concerns me that she's not also considering parents and children that are included in general education. So the way that it's worded is, I just want to point out, kind of poor, and they put off someone like me, or many of us like me, with our kids that are in a general ed classroom with supports. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I think there were more talking about the assignment at elementary level, so if you're an improvement student, who your home teacher was, it was just the same idea, especially.
And for elementary school, that'll be up this week?
It will be up moments after the meeting is over.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Roselle Sabatino, and I'm also from Wayne, but I have family in Nutley. And I am very concerned about Common Core. Now, I work at a university level. Judy presented it very eloquently, and I just want to give you a few points. Remedial reading and math are being taught in universities because our students are not prepared. I work at a university, I'm very well aware of what's going on. K through 12 with Common Core, only 50% classical literature will be taught. It's now at 80%. In fact, when I was reading what will be taught, my blood boiled. When you ask a teacher from K through 12, they would say 89% of students are well-prepared. But when you ask a college professor, they're going to tell you only 26% of students are well-prepared. And these are facts. In New York City, 80% of high school grads need remedial courses in college. Now, this is across the country. This isn't just New Jersey, this isn't just New York. This is going on all over. Now, you talked about computers. The development of these standards, standards was funded by the Gates Foundation, computers, Pearson Publishing. They're going to make an awful lot of money on our children. And quite honestly, I'm not very happy about it, because I see what it has done to students on the college level. They don't focus. Employers are complaining. I don't know what information you're getting and where you're getting it from, but universities are struggling with this problem. I work with employers on a daily basis, and I can tell you, they have many complaints about college-educated students. And Common Core has not even been implemented for that long. Couple of other points. I'm not even going to go into... I'm not even going to go into the professors. In 2009, after analyzing a new internationally benchmark pilot test that involved 105 American high schools, the report found that US students who had an economic and social advantage lagged behind 24 countries in math and 15 countries in science. That is something for all of you to think about. Many of the schools that participated in the pilot test of 105 American high schools were being outperformed by most of the developed world. Actually, Shanghai, China is the world's number-one performing region. The United States is ranked 17th in the world. American students ranked 25th in math, 17th in science, and 14th in reading. I'm an instructor for a freshman class, and I have to tell you, I am appalled by what's coming into colleges, and these are students with good SAT scores. So it's not poverty that's really dragging down the overall US scores, it's really the education system. Now, I call it collectivism. Some of you may not agree with me. It's really group think. Arne Duncan, the president, all said, we're going to nationalize education. Everyone will be the same. There's no individuals anymore. Forget Ben Franklin, forget any of our great thinkers, we won't have them. Even forget Bill Gates. These were all unique individuals. We're destroying our education system, and everybody is saying, we want that money. So the states, the governors, just kind of kowtowed and said, you know what? The states are starved for money. Let's take it. This is going to cost the states a fortune. It's going to cost taxpayers a fortune. And all the Board of Education, all the Board of Ed meetings that I go to and that we listen to people speak, have no clue what Common Core is really all about. They just accept the fact that the governor said, it's mandated, we have to put it into play. And that's a really sad commentary on our educational system and, and people in general, quite honestly, citizens who really are not very educated. President Obama frequently refers to acting as a collective. Individual freedom and liberty are rarely talked about. What better way to take over a country and indoctrinate students? This is pure overreach by the federal government. And citizens, sit around and accept it. I can tell you now, when colleges and universities have to institute remedial reading and math before Common Core is instituted, there's a big problem. And I've talked to some professors who are very upset about it. And unfortunately, everyone's hands are tied, because the state mandates it, everyone rolls over and accepts it. No one fights it, no one looks into it. Think about Bill Gates and the money he's going to make from all of these computers. And I can tell you what computers do. They're tools. That's all they are. They're tools. If a student can't read, they can't read. If they can't do math and science, if they can't perform in a college classroom, they are of no use to the employers in this state. Culturally, generationally, there are big differences. And I would just ask you to do your homework as citizens, as parents, as grandparents. Thank you.
Anything else wish to be heard? All business. Mr. Scolera.
Yes, Mr. Kaczynski, I must say, I went through it in part of his program, but I'd just like to talk about the Valarts at Ractiff School. You know, this board identified a problem there. We got together with assistants, and when you talk about shared services, from the township with Commissioner Scarpelli, to our county executive, Joe DiLorenzo, to the Board of Education, we all came together from a problem last year with funds, with manpower, with donation of the product to do it, all from three different agencies. I think that was a very successful shared project, and the kids going back to Ractiff School, this, and walking down Bluefield Avenue, lining up in front of that school, are safer because government did work, and all agencies came together to react on that problem.
You're absolutely right. And it don't look as bad as I thought it would, to be honest with you. And we came to get the other commissioners. I think there's some trees being donated by some of the other commissioners, which is a group function, like I said, of shared services and all the way down the line.
I apologize. I was sorry, Mr. Shabba, I was going to make some point, but with the commissioners of heart, maybe.
Thank you. Any other, all business. Any new business? For the Board of Education, we discuss the matters exemplified in the substance discussion pursuant to NJSA 10 for this call. Now, therefore, we resolve that the Board of Education resets the closed executive session at this time to discuss student matters. We have further resolved that the results of this discussion be made public by including on the agenda of subsequent meeting of the Board of Education for when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists.